Welcome again to the Mesa City Council meeting for November the 20th. All of our council is present. We will begin this meeting with an invocation offered by Susan Widener with the Spiritual Assembly of the Bahais of Mesa, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Boy Scout Troops 3301 and 301. So please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
O thou kind Lord, these are thy servants who have gathered in this meeting, have turned unto thy kingdom, and are in need of thy bestowal and blessing. O thou God, manifest and make evident the signs of thy oneness which have been deposited in all the realities of life. Reveal and unfold the virtues which thou hast made latent and concealed in these human realities. O God, we are as plants, and thy bounty is as the rain. Refresh and cause these plants to grow through thy bestowal. We are thy servants; free us from the fetters of material existence. We are ignorant; make us wise. We are dead; make us alive. We are material; endow us with spirit. We are deprived; make us the intimates of thy mysteries. We are needy; enrich and bless us from thy boundless treasury. O God, resuscitate us; give us sight; give us hearing; familiarize us with the mysteries of life, so that the secrets of thy kingdom may become revealed to us in this world of existence, and we may confess thy oneness. Every bestowal emanates from thee; every benediction is thine. Thou art mighty; thou art powerful; thou art the giver, and thou art the ever-bounteous.
Scouts?
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you for getting us off to a great start for our meeting. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is the Consent Agenda, and we invite Mr. Kevin Christopher forward at this time to read the Consent Agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. These are the items on the Consent Agenda. All items listed with an asterisk could be considered as a group by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered as a separate item. Item 2, approval minutes of previous meetings, is written. Items 3A through 3D pertain to acting on liquor license applications for downtown time wines and wine fair events to be held December 4th, January 8th, February 5th, and March 4th at Mesa Spirit RV Resort 3020 East Main Street. Item 3E, acting on liquor license application for Beer Babes Family One Day Event, January 13th at River View Park, 2202 West Rio Salado Parkway. Item 3F, acting on liquor license application for Dash Mart, 3512 East Southern Avenue. Item 3G, acting on liquor license application for Roy M. Thai, 1823 South Greenfield Road. Item 3H, acting on liquor license application for Pizza Katsu, 6210 East McKellips Road. Item 4A, approving contract for Police Department Headquarters Building renovation, pre-construction services, and construction manager at risk. This project is funded by 2022 Public Safety Bonds and Public Safety Sales Tax. Item 4B, approving contract for Gansel Road High Pressure Gas Line Installation, pre-construction services, and construction manager at risk. Item 4C, approving contract for Water Transfer Pump Station Number Two Upgrades, construction manager at risk, guaranteed maximum price number three. Item 4D, approving Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline, construction manager at risk, guaranteed maximum price number five. Item 4E, approving cooperative use contract for four refuse truck rentals for the Solid Waste Department. Item 4F, approving cooperative contract use for the purchase of furniture, shelving, and equipment for the Mesa Police Evidence Facility. Item 4G, approving cooperative contract use for the purchase of Pepperball Launcher Equipment and Supplies for the Mesa Police Department. This purchase is funded by Senate Bill 1720, Arizona State Treasurer. Item 4H, approving dollar limit increase to the term contract for original equipment manufacturer heavy-duty truck parts and repairs for the Fleet Services and Mesa Fire Medical Departments. Item 4I, approving dollar limit increase to the term contract for light duty and police vehicle maintenance and repair services for the Fleet Services Department. Item 4J, approving three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for traffic signal equipment painting services for the Transportation Department. Item 4K, approving one-year term contract of excess workers' compensation insurance and workers' compensation self-insurance surety bond. Item 5A, approving resolution to enter into a sub-grant award agreement with DPS to accept grant funds from the Victims of Crime Act Victim Assistance Grant Program, which will be used for personnel expenses at the Police Department's Family Advocacy Center. Item 5B, approving resolution to enter into a third amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement of the City of Tempe to increase Tempe's contribution to the Regional Water Use at Wisely Media Campaign. Item 5C, approving resolution to enter into an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Peoria for receiving and administering funds that support the Regional Water Use at Wisely Media Campaign. Item 5D, approving resolution for zoning case 22-1102 for Mesa Azure Hotel Expansion located east of Mesa Drive and south of Main Street. Site plan reviews will opt for expansion of existing hotel. Item 6A, introduction of ordinance amending the Mesa City Code regarding cost sharing related to water and sewer line improvement requirements within Title IX, Chapter 6, Section 4, and Chapter 8, Section 3. Item 6B, introduction of ordinance for zoning case 23-545 for property located west of Valvista Drive and north of University Drive. Major site plan modification and amending conditions of approval for zoning case 16-33 and special use permit to allow for a restaurant or the drive-thru. Item 6C, introduction of ordinance for zoning case 23-495 for property generally located north of University Drive and west of Power Road. Rezone with planned area development overlay and site plan review to allow for a multiple residence development. Item 6D, introduction of ordinance for zoning case 23-160 for property located north of Southern Avenue and west of Meridian Road. Rezone with planned area development overlay and site plan review to allow for a multiple residence development. Item 6E, introduction of ordinance for zoning case 23-677 for property generally located east of Crisman Road and south of Southern Avenue. Major site plan modification and amending conditions of approval for zoning case 7-7 to allow for a medical office. Item 6F, introduction of ordinance for zoning case 23-501 for property generally located west of Power Road and south of Southern Avenue. Major site plan modification and amending the conditions of approval for zoning case 99-43 to allow for expansion of an existing Walmart. Items 7A through 7N involve resolutions and ordinances for various utility schedules, terms, rates, fees, charges, and schedules of rules and regulations. Item 7A, approving resolution declaring proposed titles and schedules for electric utility services to be a public record. Item 7B, introduction of ordinance for electric utility services. Item 7C, approving resolution declaring proposed titles and schedules for natural gas utility services to be a public record. Item 7D, introduction of ordinance for natural gas utility services. Item 7E, approving resolution declaring proposed titles and schedules for water utility services to be a public record. Item 7F, introduction of ordinance for water utility services. Item 7G, approving resolution declaring proposed titles and schedules for wastewater utility services to be a public record. Item 7H, introduction of ordinance for wastewater utility services. Item 7I, approving resolution declaring proposed titles and schedules for solid waste utility services to be a public record. Item 7J, introduction of ordinance for solid waste utility services. Item 7K, approving resolution declaring proposed terms, rates, fees, charges for utility service fees to be a public record. Item 7L, introduction of ordinance modifying terms, rates, fees, charges for utility service fees. Item 7M, approving resolution declaring proposed titles and schedules of rules and regulations for electric utility services to be a public record. Item 7N, introduction of ordinance adopting and repealing schedules of rules and regulations for electric utility services. Item 8A has been removed from the Consent Agenda. Item 8B, approving ordinance for zoning case 22-1311 for property generally located west of Higley Road and south of McKellips Road. Rezone with a bonus intensity zone overlay and site plan review to allow for industrial development. Item 8C has been removed from the Consent Agenda. Item 8D, approving ordinance for zoning case 23-548 for property located north of Pecos Road and east of Ellsworth Road. Modification of an existing planned area development overlay, a major site plan modification, and amending conditions of approval for zoning case 22-268 to allow for industrial development. Item 8E, approving annexation case 22-738, annexing property located on the south side of Main Street, west of Crisman Road. Item 8F, approving ordinance for zoning case 22-1038 for property located south of Main Street and west of Crisman Road. Rezone with planned area development overlay and site plan review to allow for a multiple residence development. Items 9A and 9B are a rezoning and development agreement for the development known as Business Depot Suites, which involves land generally located west of Greenfield Road on the north side of Southern Avenue. Item 9A, approving resolution to enter into a development agreement with Ten Mountain Investments for the primary purpose of prohibiting and restricting certain land uses. And item 9B, approving zoning case 22-610, rezone with planned area development and bonus intensity zone overlay and site plan review to allow for commercial development. Item 10A, approving subdivision plot Cannon Beach Industrial Condo for property located south of Warner Road on the east side of Power Road. Item 10B, approving subdivision plot Mesa Gateway 202 for property generally located west of Ellsworth Road and south of Warner Road. Mayor and Councilmembers, these are the items on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Do we have any requests to speak on an item on the Consent Agenda?
No, Mayor, you do not.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mosley. We have a motion made by Vice Mayor Heredia, seconded by Councilmember Spillsberry. For approval of the Consent Agenda, please vote. Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next, there is an item of recognition and announcements that we'd like to acknowledge. The National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences Rocky Mountain Southwest Chapter is dedicated to excellence in television by honoring exceptional work through the prestigious Emmy Award. I think we've all heard of the Emmy Awards. The chapter recognizes achievements throughout the region that serves Arizona, California, Nevada, New Mexico, and Utah. This year, we are very excited that our own Channel 11 team was recognized and received an Emmy Award for the City of Mesa's 2023 State of the City in the category of special event coverage, live or edited. So we'd again like to, a lot of the great Channel 11 broadcasts, including these meetings, you don't see the folks behind the scenes that actually make these broadcasts happen, but we want to kind of take an exception tonight and put a spotlight on the people that are, that bring these, these great broadcasts to you. So here to tell us more about this, the Emmy Award, is Deputy Communications Director Glenn Stevens. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a very difficult award to win. This is our second nomination in 10 years of trying to get this award. And it's been, the fact that we got this is nothing more than a testament to what an amazing Channel 11 staff we have. The fact that we're able to put on an event like the Mayor's State of the City, produce all of the content of ourselves, it's, it's, it's amazing. And I don't know that many other cities in the country have the kind of talent that we have in Mesa. So this is a testament to every single person on our staff, the hard work that they put into it. We started working on this year's State of the City in June, and it's one of the biggest productions we do all year long. And between developing the content, producing the content, shooting, editing, telling the stories, it takes a massive amount of work. And this year's was my personal favorite in terms of the content that we produced. And it was also the one that probably took the most years off my life. So I tell everybody, if I was going to win one, it would, this was the one I would have picked it for. So I just want to congratulate our entire staff that was able to pull this whole thing together and represent the City of Mesa in such an outstanding way.
Well, thank you, Glenn. If you did lose any years, you can just get in the DeLorean and go back.
Go back and get them back.
Move the clock back a little bit, but thank you. I think we're all very proud of the State of the City broadcasts and the amazing job that you and your team do. Council, let's go out front and take a photo up with our Channel 11 friends and congratulate them on their well-deserved honor.
Oh, I did.
The first item off of our Consent Agenda is Agenda Item 8A. This is to discuss, receive comment, and take action on an ordinance, amending the Mesa City Code to establish a speed limit of 45 miles per hour on Williams Field Road between Crisman Road and the east city limits, and a speed limit of 40 miles an hour on Williams Field Road between Ellsworth and Crisman. Do we have any comments? Ms. Duff?
I move to remove this from the Consent Agenda. We reviewed this a few weeks ago at a council study session, and I'm still in the opinion of supporting 40 miles per hour as recommended by the Transportation Advisory Board. The reason is the segment between Mountain Road and Meridian Road is 35 miles an hour, and then on the west side of Ellsworth, on Williams Field Road is also 35 miles per hour. And within we have that curvature area, which is 40. Changing this section to 45 doesn't make sense for a number of reasons. I would like to continue to see it at 40 miles per hour. This is a perfect example of how we need to marry our land use with our roads. We have residential on the north side, proposed residential on the south side. And in that context, being a community and a neighborhood, we need to provide roads that are welcoming to all forms of mobility, walking and biking, your golf cart, whatever that is, to create community. Having something at 45 miles per hour, a stretch at 45 miles per hour, is speeding the road and not welcoming to, to any user. Especially when you consider about halfway through that stretch, there's going to be a light. So let's say you're going 35, you go up to 45, then there's a light, and then you slow down and you speed up, and then by the way, around the curve is going to be 40, and then as you go further west, it's going to be 35. Consistency and safety, and consistency as far as the speed limit, consistency as far as the land use and the road use being used together, that's why I think 40 miles per hour. There was an argument from that no matter what you put on the road, you know, people are going to travel at the perceived speed of safety. And, but there, I have a strong opinion that when you narrow lanes or add a bike lane and trees, sidewalks, there's ways to control that. Just by adopting a standard throughout our city of one way of doing our roads and then people just traveling at will, I think is irresponsible. We have to design roads according to the use to make it safe for all users. Therefore, I support the Transportation Advisory Board's unanimous decision to keep it at a 40 miles per hour. And so I vote no on this item 8A. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Duff. I should have noticed that we do have a few cards to speak from the, from the public. And so, Ms. Duff, if you'd like to make any additional comments, but let's hear from these folks, and then I apologize if I invited you to speak too soon. Michelle McCroskey. Welcome, Michelle. Thank you for your service on the Transportation Advisory Board. You have three minutes.
All righty, I'll try to be fast. As you mentioned, I've been serving on the Transportation Advisory Board as a chair for about a year and a half. When your study session, Director Zeter, mentioned that this was the first time in seven years that the Transportation Advisory Board had not agreed with staff, that should give us pause. What was it about their proposal that, that none of us could support? Well, I'm hoping to share a little bit more light on that. To be clear, we were fine with 40 miles an hour on Section 1. We were not fine with 45 miles an hour on Section 2. It just didn't make sense to us, especially like you had said, we realized the next session going east is 35 miles an hour. So 40, 45, and then transitioning down to 35, just didn't make sense, especially when we're talking about, what, a mile and a quarter? So we just thought it'd be confusing to drivers. And then less, and so that was all we heard. We recommended 40% or 40 miles an hour, and that was fine. That's the last we heard until May 6th, and that was back in May 16th, when we made that decision. To my knowledge, nobody on our board heard anything more about it until a former board member emailed the vice chair and myself with the video link from your study session. In that study session, it was also noted that the current speed limit of 45, most cars are going 50 to 55, as you mentioned. Our feeling on that is that that's another reason to switch it down to 40. And people will go, people, we know, we, people want to speed about 10 miles at the speed limit, but most of us don't go over that because the fine's pretty high. Also, Chris Brady in that session mentioned the concern with traffic congestion, that somehow implying that 45 miles an hour would have improved that. You know, I asked, what was the difference if on that space of time, or space of distance, you had two cars traveling at, one at 40 and one at 45 miles an hour? What's the difference in time saving? How much faster does Mr. 45 get there before Mr. 40? It's less than 10 seconds. Finally, our biggest concern, however, was the safety of bicycle riders with a posted speed of 45 miles an hour. And so, as was noted in the study session, I know several of you had our concerns as well. We can't remove the bicycle lanes, we've talked about that, not at a time when, when we have so much pressure to provide alternative modes of transportation. And, and we need more bike lanes. And so, plus you've got Legacy Sport Park right down the street in two miles. It's realistic to expect families get on their bikes and ride over there. So at the end of the day, we felt strongly that keeping the speed limit to 40 miles an hour, and so both Sections 1 and 2, it just made more sense. It's a little safer for bicycle riders. It's less confusing to drivers, and it makes a more consistent and smoother transition to the 35 miles an hour. And I don't know how much, well, I'm out of town. So I hope you'll consider our proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Mike James. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Mike James, 922 East Sixth Place, Mesa, Arizona, also a member of the Transportation Advisory Board. The main reason I wanted to come and speak tonight is, you know, we heard tonight how great our staff is, and they really are. But I think staff missed the mark a little bit in communicating all of the concerns that we heard and discussed at our TAB meeting when it came to study session and the staff report. So, you know, we heard some compelling points that really caused our entire board to vote as we did, keeping the speed limit at 40 for both sections. The first was really an observation from someone who lived and drove in the area a lot, identifying extensive, extensive speeding on signal beaut in the area, with a lot of concerns with noise, safety concerns, you know, just dangerous situation with speeding and racing in the area. Secondly, we heard concerns about when development was going to happen, you know, when are the street lights going to come on for some of these turns? And, you know, a slower speed would be safer for, you know, until those lights and the full street segment got built out. Thirdly, was the issue that Councilmember Duff mentioned, you know, the transition of different speed limits, you know, when you're changing from 35 to 45 to 40 to 35 was confusing. So that was an issue that also really caused us to say, hey, you know, let's keep this consistent at 40. A third thing was really interesting was a question to the officer at our meeting. He was really asked, is this something that's enforceable, you know, going to 40? And he, you know, he kind of nodded yes, and he said something I think was very interesting. He said, for most drivers, 5 mile an hour holds significance in terms of their traffic behavior. So while yes, there are some people that are going to exceed the speeds, and they're already doing that, for a lot of people, it is going to make it safer for those wanting to ride their bike and walk, et cetera. Just other issues, I think that have been mentioned already, you know, with the Legacy Sports Park, that the desire to have a safe walking and biking connection was brought up. And then also, you know, the 45 miles an hour really is not comfortable with that cyclist on the street. And the last point that I would just kind of make, and it comes up a lot at our TAB when we're discussing these types of issues, is the opportunity to look for some new standards. And we're, we're working with staff, and we're excited, you know, as the transportation master plan and the general plan come along, that there's an opportunity to look for some new standards for arterials where we want to have safe walking and biking. So we look forward to continue working with staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. David Winstanley.
Mayor, councilmen, councilwomen, thank you for letting me speak. I am also on the Transportation Advisory Board. I won't repeat the things that Councilwoman Duff said and the other two have said. I had the same concerns about changes in speed limit. I do ride that road on my bicycle. Well, actually, I used to. I don't anymore. It's not safe. Currently, there's no bike lane, and the trucks go 50 miles an hour. It is really crazy. But one of the other reasons that I brought up in the TAB meeting is, right next to it and at the intersection is Crisman Road, which is one mile, straight as an arrow, one intersection to the west, three intersections, sorry, one intersection to the east, three intersections to the west, 35 miles an hour. How is that different than Williams Field? If Crisman can be 35, why can't Williams Field be 40? There, there's a standards difference here that didn't make sense to me, and I tried to understand it, but I couldn't get a, an explanation that I understood, and it might be my fault for not understanding traffic standards. But that, that's the kind of thing. I did do a survey of a few folks, and, and many people who don't understand think if we slow it down to 40 miles an hour, that we will have less ability to get throughput. I think the difference between 45 and 40 is quite small, as, as our leader, Michelle, talked about, you know, a few seconds and it's not going to change the throughput that much, especially with the other speed limits on, on the two ends. So with that, I'd like to ask your consideration for that. One other thing I'd like to suggest is, are there options for putting in the median? There are long stretches with no intersection. Can we put things in the median because visuals will slow people down? Or other ideas on roads like that where we're trying to keep the speed limit as a natural way that drivers work? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We also have Ryan Wozniak. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. My name's Ryan Wozniak. I'm Mesa resident at 1301 West Ninth Street. And so I am a former TAB member who was before the, was presented to on this item back in May. I've since not, I'm not on the TAB anymore. I've done my two terms on the TAB, and, you know, over that time, I saw a relationship build between TAB and staff, and it was something that I really found quite cherished. And because I understand that good community engagement isn't a one-off process, a one decision by a decision, it's really a relationship that should be built. And so that was really the heart of what was disheartening to me when I saw the council session, or the study session in October, because staff went on for about six minutes as to their technical reasons why they were coming down with their recommendation, and they provided about 35 seconds and three bullet points to TAB. And I felt like that wasn't quite parody of the type of recommendations. Now, to be clear, staff definitely deserves their own recommendations. They are on staff, totally. I just think that there was a mist of parody there. And as somebody who's been in those shoes of having to be staff in another city and present two different viewpoints, it was always imperative to me to make sure that those viewpoints were on par with one another. And so this kind of seems silly, right? Those 40 miles an hour or 45 miles an hour is such a small difference, but I really think that this was just a message that TAB was trying to provide to staff, to sort of nudge them in the right direction and understanding that there is a FHWA clear guidelines as to what is a safe bike lane that's allowed for just a simple stripe, and what really does require additional protection, so that everybody is accommodated in a complete street manner. And complete streets are not something new to the city's planning goals, right? It goes back to the original, or the, the previous transportation plan that's currently on the books, even while we update one today. So a lot of good things that should be sort of mindful about that. And staff was very clear as to their, their goals to be consistent through the region, and I think that's actually a misstep. So there's good technical reasons to be consistent, but there's also good economic or social reasons to be inconsistent, provide variety of, of street types throughout a community. And I think that this is an opportunity to see And I think that this is an opportunity to see this, this connector between community and, it has nearby park, and it's got an interchange at US 24. So there's going to be a lot of people moving through that, but it doesn't have to be a hostile movement, right? So what can, it can do to that surrounding neighborhood that's going to have all this traffic that comes through an interchange, but how do you calm it down so it's not a detriment to the community? That's nice.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wozniak. Councilmember Duff, anything you'd like to add to your prior comments before we move on to other comments?
No, I just want to thank everybody. It's a nice surprise to see so many of you attend, and thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Ms., go forth.
Yeah, I also want to say thank you for the TAB members for coming today, and also for your service on TAB. It's valuable to us. Thank you. I, I do have just a few comments, and I'm reiterating what most people have said, but I did want to make sure that I said, I, I think our transportation network should be safe for all users, and that our bikeway planning process and policies might need to be reevaluated. More emphasis needs to be placed on the design user and the roadway context, taking into account the surrounding land uses. Others have said this is residential to the north and to the south, with also a, a small commercial portion that's planned for the corner. As well as applying our goals and objectives of our, our general plan, this is, this character area designation from the general plan for this portion of Williams Field is mixed-use community. And in the general plan, that should include residential neighborhoods that contain a variety of housing types and densities, and include parks, schools, and village centers or urban cores that are located with a convenient walking or bicycling distance from all homes. We're missing an opportunity, I think, in this, this one particular area to serve a greater number of people. As proposed, we serve the, the least number of users, the ones who are highly confident when riding in high-stress areas, when we're talking about the bike lanes. And as Mr. Wozniak mentioned, according to the 2019 Bikeway Selection Guide, as proposed by the US Department of Transportation's Federal Highway Administration, with the volume of traffic and the speeds of this road, the proposed bike lane is not safe for any user. So for this reason, I, I agree with Councilmember Duff, and I would also agree with TAB's recommendation for 40 miles per hour.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Summers.
So I want to thank everybody for coming out. Dave, Dave and I actually live about a mile apart, so I don't, I don't ride my bike up and down the street like he does. He's far more fit, apparently, than I am. But we live in the Eastmark community together, and so let me give you a little bit of history about that, because I think that ties in here. I, I think this discussion, what we're having right now, would have happened whether this road between 40, 45, we're in District One, or District Five, or District Four, it doesn't matter. It's really digging into an issue of, as was stated, how do we want to build our roads for better safety for drivers, better safety for walkers, cyclists, any way that you use the street? And it's interesting that this gets brought up, because when we developed Eastmark, it was very much about building streets for users of all types. So when you look at Crisman Road, it's a little narrower. It has a protected median in the middle of it. It's only a couple lanes both directions, so we wanted to slow it down. Think about Everton Terrace. It's only one lane in both directions with curves that go through to slow traffic down, to allow the residents to get in and out, to be safer for those who are walking, safer for those who are biking. Very intentional design with how we put that street together. And our work is not done. There are other streets that are connecting communities in southeast Mesa that's going to go on for more than a decade. Some of those streets are going to come up soon. There's, there's requests for improvements to Crisman to the north side, for example. And how do we build those streets to slow down the traffic? Because does it really need to be a six-lane highway? For Williams Field Road, it's, it is a bit interesting, right? So the, the slower portion of it, where it's 40 miles an hour in front of the soccer field, well, that was done because of the curvature. And it does seem to be a little bit confusing to have 45 in the middle, but even though there's only a small portion of commercial that's planned for Crisman, when you go farther out to Signal Butte, there's a larger commercial development that's going to occur there. And as you get past that road to the east, why is it so slow to 35? Well, it dead-ends into Pinale County into someone's driveway, I'm pretty sure. All right, looking at the maps, it's very, very slow. That's why it's much slower there. But it's the tie between the commercial area at Signal Butte, all the way to that freeway, that's the stretch that we're looking at as being 45. It actually matches what's happening up at Ray Road. Ray Road cuts through the Eastmark community at 45 miles an hour. I would argue that street is probably a better candidate for another look on how we design streets, because it has a high school on it, has commercial on it, it has a neighborhood pool on it, right? And it doesn't have the major commercial, nor does it have access to the State Route 24 freeway. So if we were going to slow a street down, maybe Ray Road's the one we look at over Williams Field, which is more of a connection to the, to the 24. Ultimately, though, it's, it's, this is a really difficult challenge, because on one hand, I get emails all the time about people going too fast, on Ray Road, on Williams Field, on Elliott. And on the other hand, I, I did an unofficial poll, I admit, but I asked people in the community in Eastmark, I posted it to the social media page, I said, we're looking at increasing the speed. What's your desire? And by an eight-to-one margin, 45 miles an hour was what we people wanted. It's 426 to 49. Handful of letters today, didn't change that. So I'm going to support what my residents has asked for, the 45 miles an hour. But I'm looking forward to, in the future, with this council and with the community, what do we want roads to look like? How do we want to design them? So with that, Mayor, my motion is for 45. Looks like we have a motion already.
I don't see.
Now you can make a motion.
Okay. Mr. Motion, Mr. Summers has made the motion. Additional discussion? All right. Ms. Spillsbury.
I don't have a lot to add, except thank you for coming and participating. I'm going to go back with my comments that I made previously, just in my district. I didn't drive every single street, but I'm pretty sure almost every single one is a 45 miles per hour currently through my entire district. So I do think that it probably needs to be a future conversation that we have. So I also would support our staff's recommendation to keep that straight part of it to be 45. I think they, didn't we say that the average speed people are going right now is 55? Is that what I remember?
50 to 55.
Okay. 50, 55. So I support the 45.
All right. Thank you. Any other, any other discussion? Is there a second to Mr. Summers' motion? Thank you. So we have a motion and a second from Councilmember, Councilmembers Summers and Spillsbury for approval of Agenda Item 8A. Passes 4-3 with Mr. Freeman, Councilmember Freeman, Duff, and go forth, voting no. Next item on our agenda is Agenda Item 8C. This is taking action on an ordinance regarding Hawes Cross Village, Hawes Crossing Village One, Phase Two. This is to rezone 17.4 acres, plus or minus, to allow for additional modifications to the development standards and to include a single residence development known as Village One, Phase Two. Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Mayor. I did ask for this item to be removed from the consent agenda. Once again, I'm going to speak to a little bit of history in this community. I was a part of the general planning that happened 10 years ago, as well as one of the drivers for the creation of the Gateway Strategic Development Plan. Both those plans, when you look at them, neither one of them suggested residential in this area, what's called Inside the Loop, which is the area between Power Road and the Loop 202. What envisioned is that appropriate residential project would be a mixed-use development of buildings of 40 dwelling units per acre, per net acre, so that would be more of a low-to-mid-rise type of development. And again, that was on page 26. Again, on page 50, it was low-rise, multifamily, 40 dwelling units an acre, vertically-integrated mixed-use development of families that live above commercial properties that are in concert with the noise contours of the airport. Something, if you wanted to visualize this, think of something that looks like Tempe Town Lake, without the lake, and maybe a little shorter, right? That was the vision that was created. The, the problem that, that I'm having is that this is something very much of a suburban nature, six to 12 dwelling units per acre. And so I, I can't, I, having been part of that planning, having seen that, the vision that we created more than a decade ago, I can't sign my, my name to this. And I know that plans change, and I, I know that this body went through a lot of work in considering what, what was going to be built here. But in creating the, the vision for Mesa, for creating the Mesa Gateway Strategic Development Plan, that was a vision that we all bought into. Residents, landowners, business owners, and to see it shift like this, quite frankly, has created some uncomfortable conflicts, where industrial is coming up against residential, single-family residential development on both sides of the freeway. And seeing this development going, and knowing the other development that's around it, we're going to see more of that industrial development coming into conflict with single-family residential. And to tie into the theme that we just had, we're talking about how to make safer roads. When you put semi-trucks in conflict with small vehicles, or bicycles, or motorcycles, or pedestrians who are walking, nothing good comes from that. So I will not be in support of, of this project. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Summers. Any other discussion on this agenda item? Is there a motion for approval?
Can someone just briefly explain what we're, I'm looking through the presentation, but I'm not exactly sure.
So I think Councilman Summers alluded to it, now have Mary back me up. So I think the reference of the studies that the council was referring to happened probably a decade ago. Back in 2020, about 2020, I want to say it was right before the pandemic, is what I remember, when the city council re-reviewed this entire area, we called the Inner Loop Study, as part of it, was part of a long discussion and negotiations with the, the property owners in there, the dairy farmers, and the development community. We came together and, over the course of several months, conducted the Inner Loop Study, and we took into account the, the studies we'd done before, but we also looked at, again, reviewing the contours of the airport, and what would be the right mix of types of development in this area. And then that study came out after several months in public discussion with the community. The community, especially on the north end, was not tremendously in support of a lot of industrial manufacturing types of development. They were more interested in lower-density residential, which we had to be careful with, because again, it was still proximate to an airport. So we tried to balance that idea of having a higher-density residential is typically what you want close to an airport, just because most of your activities are inside, versus a more suburban look where there's a lot of outdoor experience. And I think this was kind of that compromise into that area. So I want to say, Mary, that the proposal that is here, that, and the reason it was supported by staff and by planning and zoning, is this is consistent with the most recent study that was approved by council, is 2020 accurate or 2019, I think?
So Mayor, Mr. Brady, the Inner Loop Study was done in 2018.
Oh.
But then it was the Hawes Crossing General Plan Amendment that came after that in 2019.
Okay. Thank you.
That actually was the plan that put the RSL 2.5 as the primary zoning district, and single-family residential was listed as a primary use in the general plan for this area. So it is consistent with the general plan from the Hawes Crossing General Plan Amendment from 2019.
I think it's good to mention this, because all of this was in negotiation, all of this, inner 3,000, or 1,000 acres, the largest annexation the city has ever done at one time. This was the balance in that conversation of trying to allow for this entire area to have a balance of different development types, while at the same time acknowledging the impact of being proximate to an airport and the noise impacts that it has, but also trying to balance out with more jobs. But honestly, at that time, residential continues to be a priority also, and balancing what the community wanted. The community, the existing neighborhood to the north, was very much interested in not having industrial manufacturing abutting up to them. They wanted some transition to residential.
And so I do remember, I was watching council meetings back then, before I was on council. So I remember the Hawes Crossing vote, and I remember being asked about it while I was running in my campaign. But so just to clarify then, that, the council approved the general plan amendment back then, and now we're approving a specific proposal for the site? Is that what is happening?
Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, yes. So the general plan amendment laid out what the general plan and the zoning district, district designations would be on this site, and the project is following that general plan designation and the zoning designation. The Hawes Crossing General Plan Amendment. That's correct.
So I have a quick question. So what, what you're asking, what you're proposing, Councilmember Summers, though, is not on the table anymore, right? You're, you, you are advocating for higher-density residential than this is even, than what's in the amendment now?
This would not have been my recommendation.
I could maybe add some, my recollection of the Hawes Crossing zoning case, and that was a very significant zoning case, as Mr. Brady indicated, it was rezoning, there was multiple property owners, over 1,000 acres of property. It was influenced by changes in the noise contours around the airport. For many years, there was a unwritten or really written rule that no residential development was allowed south of the power line, and we, again, when it came time to zone thousands of acres, we were asked to reassess that, and whether or not that was a good rule or not. There had been changes in technology related to airplane noise, and so the, the noise contours of years previous had been redrawn. There was also land use arguments being made as to whether or not it, it was good city planning to literally have 1,000 acres of no residential development. The determination was that was not good city planning, that there were really no place in the country where you'll, where you'll see something like that. And so to kind of relitigate that zoning case from, from several years ago, that was the decision that was made. I supported it at the time, and, and as we're seeing that part of Mesa build out, I, I feel like we have made the right decision. So for those reasons, I will be supporting this ordinance. Any additional discussion? Do we have a motion?
The panel should be set for some, did anybody try to make a motion? There we go.
Councilmember Spillsbury's made a motion, seconded by Councilmember Freeman. Please vote. Thank you. Passes six to one with Councilmember Summers voting no. Next item on our agenda is Agenda Item 12, I'm sorry, 11A. 11A is the public hearing for annexation case 23-480 for approximately 4.5 acres located west of Ellsworth Road on the north side of Southern Avenue. I declare the public hearing open. Ms. Mosley, do we have any requests to speak from the public on this item?
No request, Mayor.
Thank you. Do any council members wish to address this item? All right. Thank you. I declare the public hearing closed. There is no action for this item at this meeting. This annexation will come back to the council at a future council meeting for action. This annexation will come back to the council at a future council meeting for action. Next item on our agenda is items from citizens present. Ms. Mosley, do we have any requests to speak on this agenda item?
No request, Mayor.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.